I'm gonna, oh, Jamie, are you good? Sorry. All right. Good evening. I'm gonna call the Select Board meeting to order for Monday, February 12th, 2024. And also let you know that as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audio tape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess one other thing. Jamie, can we check if, I think Michael is on remotely? Are you able to tell?
Somebody named KB and somebody named MM.
Okay. Oh, let's see. Oh, he said the link isn't, it says it's invalid.
If other people are on, then it's invalid.
I move that Michael's invalid. You could say it a different word. Don't write that down, Bill.
Tell him I said that.
You didn't say off the record first.
That's a good point.
Okay.
One Michael, Michael McCaskill.
There, is this him? Are you on?
Is this him? Are you on? Is this him? Are you on?
That's not him.
That's me.
I can just hear this meeting. And roots.
That sounds like he had two devices.
Two, yeah. Are you using a computer and a telephone, right? Yeah. All right. He's, he's working on it. I'm gonna open up to public comments and announcements. Anybody for a public comment and announcements?
I'll go last again.
Hi, Link Hooper, DPW Director. I heard there might be some snow coming our way, and I just wanted to urge some patience with us. We have not plowed in three years. We've had a fair amount of turnover with our contractors. I was really worried about the level of service we could provide. The board voted my fee schedule I recommended, and we able to attract four new plows with that. But we are still down plows. We've had, we've got new employees and new contractors. So if you have a problem, please give us a call. 508-430-7555, DPW. We had, if we're out plowing, we head to the funds.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else for, Carolyn?
What are you showing us from last week?
Hi, Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. In light of said snow, we will be rescheduling our Valentine's Day bingo to Valentine's Day. So it is still happening. We will just be on the 14th still from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Okay.
And then just one other one is that we are going to be doing a free advertising event on Saturday, March 30th, but that is for the public as well. We always stand up here and tell the community all the wonderful things that we do. So we are looking if you, I don't know, have trampolines or, so we're gonna invite everyone in the community. If you're at the Cape Cod Theater Company, you wanna have a table set up, just so the whole town can come someplace to find out what events and things are happening here in the town of Harwich. And the last thing I wanna mention, because I neglected to do it before, is on all of our flyers, you should be seeing a little acorn, 'cause I'm nuts. That's a little too loud of a laugh over there. That is one of our new logos that we're using, and it is the Harwich Community Center. From tiny acorns, mighty oaks grow. And that's what we feel like. We take everyone from the smallest child, and they stay with us hopefully their whole time. We are also located on Oak Street, so tried to work it in every smart.
Carolyn, can I ask you a question? Did we find the pigs?
Oh, there's one still out there.
Really?
Yes, yes, but they were, Cindy got to witness somebody finding one, so, and there's been one at the library, the community center. Those have all been found, but there is still one remaining. And I do know of several families hunting, and we do still put the clues out there, but people are having a good time with it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, do you wanna go ahead?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like to remind all of our hospitality restaurant and bar owners to show up and be heard on February 15th at the community center from 5:30 to 7:30. Cindy Williams and I will be there to discuss how the town and our businesses in that space can work better as partners for a great 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment and announcement? Hearing nobody, we'll go on to the consent, consent agenda. Jeff?
Are we doing both at the same time? Yeah? I move that we designate Jennifer Harrington as the 2024 Municipal Animal Control Officer. I also move that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes for February 5th, 2024.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I'm an aye.
Oh, I forgot. I didn't know you got on for sure.
I'm on.
Yeah, yeah, I do. Never mind, I'm gonna do roll call, 'cause you're remote. So, Michael, you're an aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Four zero. We'll go on to the public hearings and presentations. We have a public hearing, approve a stormwater permit for a seven lot subdivision plan. The Wildlife Circle located off Littlefield Pond Road assesses map 65 parcel R2-20. Who do we have for that, Joe?
So in addition to the packet materials, I believe we're joined by Representative from VHB on the call.
Is anyone from VHB on? It doesn't sound like it. Well, we'll move, why don't we move on to the next item?
You want to read that, Madam Chair?
Yeah, would you? Thank you.
The Harwich Select Board will hold a public hearing on February 12th, 2024, no earlier than 6:00 p.m. in the Don B. Griffin Room located at Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, for the purpose of considering whether or not, whether to opt out of early voting by mail for special town elections scheduled for April 9, 2024, thus as authorized under Mass. General Law, Chapter 5425B. Please note, action on this topic will not impact early voting by absentee ballot, which will remain available for all qualified voters in all elections. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend.
Thank you. Emily?
Good evening. Emily Mitchell, Town Clerk. So I did include a fairly substantive memorandum in your packet, so I'm happy to go over it, or if you would prefer to just discuss and take any public input, I'm happy to go either way.
I think it's helpful for the public to understand why you're making your recommendations. So I think if you just sort of give an overview, it would be helpful.
Absolutely. So as I've mentioned in a few different presentations to the board in the past, in 2022, the state legislature passed something called the Votes Act, which was a very comprehensive update, change, expansion to state election laws. And when they passed that change in 2022, they made permanent something called vote by mail, and that's different than absentee voting, which is something that has been offered in all elections and is baked right into the state constitution. So just to differentiate between the two, absentee voting is something that allows voters who meet certain qualifying criteria to vote in any election, whether that's local, state, or federal, by mail. They have to be either out of town on Election Day, have a physical disability that prevents them from voting at their polling location on Election Day, or have a religious objection to being able to vote at their polling location on Election Day. So they submit an application to us saying, under the pains and penalties of perjury, that one of those criteria apply to them, and that's what qualifies them to vote by absentee ballot. Vote by mail is basically saying that anyone can vote by mail without having to meet any of those qualifying criteria. So both options are in place. Absentee voting has not gone away. So folks who meet those qualifying criteria do often choose to vote by absentee ballot rather than these vote by mail ballots. But vote by mail has taken away the excuse component. So now any registered voter may apply to vote by mail in elections. So the law says that communities are required to offer vote by mail for state and federal elections, and that the default is to offer it in local elections, but that select boards in communities may opt out. They do have to hold a public hearing, which is what you're doing this evening, and then if you choose to opt out, you're required to do so by roll call vote. So that's the difference between the two. So no matter what you do this evening, absentee voting will remain available for all elections, including the special election. What I'm suggesting to you this evening is that it may be worthwhile to opt out of the vote by mail component. Really, the biggest factor in my recommendation to you has to do with how the state administers the application process. So part of the same legislation, the Votes Act, the state is now required to send out vote by mail applications, the postcards that I've talked about here before, that I'm sure folks are familiar with, inviting people to apply by mail, and they send those out prior to every state and federal election. So they sent them out in January in advance of the presidential primary election that's happening in March, and they include several options on that application. So when a voter receives that application in the mail, they see four options. One that says all 2024 elections, and then each of the state and federal elections are identified specifically. So the March 5th presidential primary, the September 3rd state primary, and the November 5th presidential election. My biggest concern, or what I think is a disservice to voters, is that that application makes no reference to local elections. It doesn't say there will be a local election. It doesn't say that by checking all elections, you are opting in to receive a ballot for your local elections. So what we've seen so far is that the vast majority of voters who are returning these postcard applications are selecting all elections, but they see primary, primary, presidential. So we did, when I wrote the memorandum to you last week, we had gotten just over 1,600 requests for all elections to include the special town election, but again, those applications don't make reference to the local election. We've only received one application from a Harwich voter specifically seeking a mailed ballot for, on an application that identifies the, the special town election. So I would feel differently, truthfully. I wouldn't likely be here recommending to you to opt out of vote by mail for the special if voters were informed about what checking that box meant, but that's not the case in this particular circumstance.
Okay.
This year is the first time that those postcards have ever gone out before our local elections. The initial state law change in 2020 that was passed as kind of a COVID precaution or a COVID reaction went out in the summer prior to the state primary and presidential election in 2020. Same within 2022, there weren't any state or federal elections before our locals. So this is really the first test.
Right.
Where we've gotten the postcards before a local election that might be impacted.
Right.
When the same law was in effect last year, where any voter could vote by mail, no excuse, for our annual town election, and only 57 voters chose to do that. So we're not a huge community for vote by mail for local elections. Some of our neighboring towns, it's very popular. Folks choose to vote by mail in their local elections at much higher numbers, and that's just not what we've seen in Harwich today.
Well, those are good numbers for us to consider, so. Is there any discussion by board members? Don, you have no problem? Jeff?
No, I'm inclined to support our clerk's recommendation.
I am too, yeah. Don?
I'd like to make a motion. We opt out of vote by mail for the special town election on April 9th, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Michael, do you have any, I should've went to, with any discussion?
I have no comments, and I'm an aye.
Okay, thanks. Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So four zero, we support you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Madam Chair, if I could, before you proceed, under the first item, there was actually a request from the applicant that that hearing be continued to next week. They're working with VHB to provide more documentation.
Okay, great.
So I think it would be appropriate for the board to vote to continue that.
Okay, so.
Without opening it or with opening it?
Request was to continue. I defer to the board as to how you wanna proceed.
I'll make a motion that.
Just wondering if you'd open it first and then continue it.
Yeah, well, that's true. We didn't really, really.
You just said, let's do it later.
Yeah, I did. So, all right, so why don't we open it and then continue it? Probably makes more sense.
Thought you did open it when you read, when you.
Well, I said we had a public hearing, and I just read it from here.
Okay.
So we didn't really officially open it.
Okay.
Joe, what, what do you think is cleaner? To just continue the matter to the following agenda? Do we, do you want us to open up the public hearing and then go from there?
Well, the belt and suspenders approach would be open and continue.
All right, so why don't we do that?
Madam Chair, I moved that we open the public hearing. You already read the notice.
I did.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Madam Chair, I moved that we continue that hearing until, what's the next date?
Next Tuesday, June.
20th, isn't it?
Uh, June. February 20th.
June.
A felican dream.
20th? Oh, yeah, that's right, 'cause you're holiday. Okay, until February 20th, 2024.
No, no earlier than 6:00 p.m.
No earlier than 6:00 p.m.
I'll second all of that.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Any discussion? Michael?
I'm an aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Four zero, we'll continue to the 20th.
Thank you.
Notice of public hearing. The Harwich Select Board will hold a public hearing to solicit public comment on proposed golf fees for 2024 at Cranberry Valley Golf Course. The hearing will be held on Monday, January 29th, 2024, in the Griffin Room at Town Hall, 732 Main Street, no earlier than 6:00 p.m. Remote participation is also available. Please see posted agenda for dial-in information.
So.
I move that we open the public hearing.
Thank you. You seconded it? Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor? Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, so our public hearing for golf is open. Roman, if you wanna come take a seat.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Here, members of the board.
Did you play today? It was nice out.
It was nice, I worked.
Okay.
That's okay, I have, I did sneak around last week. Probably the last one for February.
There you go.
Excellent. Won't be playing tomorrow, though.
No, not tomorrow. Tomorrow we'll be shoveling.
He's gonna use an orange bowl.
Yeah. So thank you for the information you've given us. I'll let you take it from here and.
Okay, I know you've had the information in your packet for many weeks now.
Yes.
So I'll assume that you've read through it and you're familiar with it. The one thing I'll say is, you know, this recommendation basically represents consistency. I mean, it's consistent with the approach we've used over the last few years. It's really, it's working, we have formulas working, and I'll open it up for questions from you, because there's very little change. I can actually read, if you'd like me to, I can read the changes proposed.
Sure, just for the public, why don't you?
Sure, so the proposed, there's a proposed increase to the Harwich Resident Adult Category Annual Pass by $50, which would retain $25 in the Golf Improvement Fund, and $25 would go to the general fund, and an increase to the non-resident adult annual pass category by $100, once again retaining 25 in the Golf Improvement Fund for our capital projects. And, and as far as greens fee and cart fees, there's an introduction of a Harwich resident greens fee daily rate of $50.
Thank you. Questions from board members? Michael, I'll start with you, so I don't forget you.
Sorry, I was unmuting, and I couldn't find the button. I have no questions. Great, great job, Roman, as always. The, there is, there is one item that we did receive some email on that I, that I certainly appreciate and would at least propose a change tonight, and that's related to the handicap fees, handicap cart fees. And the, and the gentleman asked, because of his disability, he plays nine holes, and he has to rent a cart, and was wondering if there would be any resident disability cart rate considerations. Did you ever, did you ever talk about that?
No, sir, we have not. And one, one of the reasons that we have not is our current cart, cart rental lease with our vendor is a revenue share lease, and so all the rates and fees were approved with them as part of the agreement when we signed it three years ago. So we signed that based on the current rates, and, and there was an expectation that they would not be reduced.
Any follow-up?
Thank you, Roman. Yeah, the only follow-up I have would be a request of Roman to reach out to the, to the cart company and see if that's something that we could negotiate. I think it would, it would be, at least, I would support waiving the cart fees, which are $14 and $25, waiving in their entirety if somebody has a disability and they need a cart. Certainly, you'd have to go back to the vendor, but I'd like to think our vendor would at least consider that for disabled people.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I'd look in, I'd have to look into what the criteria we're looking at. There, there is, it's, it can, it can be common for some municipalities offer a discount for disabled carts, but, you know, I'm not familiar with waiving the fee outright. I think if anything, it's more often than not a discount. I don't think the vendor would be very open to having golf carts that they're responsible for, that they, you know, they're responsible for any damage to them for free.
Would it be better than that we, this is a larger discussion on fee waivers, right? So maybe it's something that you make a list of people who have requested them, and you bring them to the board. We waive the fee, so somehow you debit it through, so that the, the contract stays in place, but the board has allowed a fee waiver.
Great. I could definitely look into that.
It might just be cleaner.
Okay.
And easier to, to accomplish instead of involving the, 'cause it's not gonna be a lot of people. It's not gonna add up to a lot of money. Might be the best, better way to go. I don't, I don't know. But if you reach out to the contractor, I think, and just see, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, Michael?
I have none. Thank you.
Thanks. Jeff?
Yeah, Roman, thank you for putting this together. Very well thought out, very well done. I just have a couple of comments, and to, to Michael's suggestion, I would support a reduction or a fee waiver for the, for people who are in need of having a cart, who are disabled and can't get around as easily. I really like what you did with respect to the greens fee, play as you go for our town residents. Think that's now from what would be market rated $85, down to 50 now, I believe.
Yes.
For, can you just explain that for the public, just so the public can understand exactly what you did there, if you don't mind?
I can. And, you know, for, most golfers do know that this is the most common approach that municipalities take is a pace you go daily fee, a one rate for residents and one rate for non-residents. And it would offer an option. I think right now, Harwich residents that would maybe play golf once a month, they, they either feel like they need to take out the annual pass and pay the entire $910 that's being proposed right now, or pay the full rack rate that, where they wouldn't get any discount whatsoever, even though there are residents that supports the golf course, maybe has supported it since its inception in 1974. So, so in respect to that, it would offer Harwich residents the resident daily fee rate of $50. So it'd be a discounted rate.
So I, I really think that's fantastic, how you are putting that into play this year. I'd also like to just make known that this was staggering to me, that, that you all do 44,000 rounds of golf a year.
Yes. Big number.
That is, that is a number, just, just for comparison, private golf courses do between 15,000 and 18,000 rounds a year.
Correct.
And you're, you're at over double, you know? And, and what you do with your staff with respect to the customer service end, taking care of the people who come in there, and what our maintenance, and, and it's simply wizardry what you all do. It's, it's beyond recognition. So I just wanted to let you know that I see that, and that's, that's pretty incredible.
Thank you.
And, and how, you know, this is my first time reading through this, and how you balance, the balancing act between non-resident, resident, and then greens fees, and all the, the, the charity things that you do, it's really something else, that you can balance this, this budget the way you do, so.
It's complicated, but thank you.
It is very complicated, and I, I really applaud your effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Don?
Thank you very much, Chair. I could've sworn I heard Michael say the W-word.
Yes, you did. Yeah, you did say it.
I, I agree with everything that's been said. It was a very nice, nicely laid out presentation, and Sean Fernandez is the other person that I'm sure you wanted to thank, because with all that number of people trotting on the course, it's, it's incredible. It stays in the condition it does, and it's top-notch. The only thing I'm gonna say is I'm gonna vote for this, but for several years in a row, I've been asking, this is above your pay grade, I've been asking for a breakout of the revolving funds and exactly, you know, what, what the leverage on them is, what the balance is over the last several years. And that's a finance director and town administrator question. I won't be voting for him again next year absent a committee to ask those questions, or me getting an answer to those questions directly, but I am voting for this, and it was a well-laid out presentation. Thank you, Roman.
Thank you. And one, one thing I would love to clarify, just 'cause I think people do get confused by this, the revolving fund really only applies to the pro shop. That's for, for buying merchandise for the pro shop and selling merchandise. It's got nothing to do with the general fund fees of actually paying greens fees and cart fees. They're totally separate.
I get that, but the immortal words of Everett Dirksen, pretty soon you're talking about real money. So I'd like to know how that interacts with what we do as appropriations, and who's, who allocates the, because it isn't something that you would be in a position to do. Who allocates what portion of the fees go to general funds versus greens fees? That's, that's a here, you know, there thing, and it isn't you, so. It's a bigger discussion. It's not something you could possibly answer, but I'm gonna vote for it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanna thank you for the information. As you know, I'm not a golfer, but I am amazed at all the different pieces that you, of this puzzle that you all have to put together. I do love to go there for breakfast, so I know what an amazing job you do. It's quite beautiful.
Beautiful breakfast spot.
It really is. And so I thank you for all your hard work, and of course, Sean, and, and everybody who, who works hard to make it as beautiful as it is, such a great asset for the town. So thanks for your hard work, and we'll go forward with our vote. So we've got a, are you gonna make a motion?
Yep, absolutely, Madam Chair. I move that we approve the Cranberry Valley Golf Course rates and fees adjustments as recommended by the golf director as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Madam Chair?
Oh, yeah. Michael?
Just in the spirit of the public hearing, I did not hear from anyone in the public. Is there anyone in the public?
Oh, right.
Nor have we closed the hearing.
Thank you, no, we haven't closed the hearing, that's true.
Then we have to close the public hearing.
Yeah, right, sorry. Thanks. Is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak on the golf rates? No?
Move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you. Give me a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor? I'll go to him.
One, one.
Don?
Yes?
Jeff?
Aye.
Michael?
Ayes.
And I'm an aye, that's four oh, to close the public hearing. Now.
You're on.
I move that we, I move that we approve the Cranberry Valley Golf Course Rates and Fees Adjustments as recommended by the Golf Course Director.
Moved and seconded. Now, any further discussion? All in favor? Don?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so four zero, thank you, Roman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roman.
Dee? Is there a person here?
Yeah, this is Amanda. You want to come on up and join us? Yeah, please, if you would.
Do you want to just read that out?
Sure. We are joined tonight by Amanda Converse, who will give a presentation on her nonprofit, Love Live Local Incorporated, on the importance of small business to Cape Cod and the local economy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have, yeah, I think.
Thanks.
We have it, but we didn't put it up on the screen. I think if you just run through your information.
It feels really appropriate for me going after the golf course, because my dad works there. So thank you all so much for giving me this opportunity to speak with you today. I've been able to give this presentation to a couple of other select boards, and I've been grateful for all those opportunities to talk about a topic that is incredibly important, the long-time viability and sustainability of Cape Cod, our small local businesses and their impact on our local economy. So for those of you who might not be familiar with Love Live Local, the organization was founded in 2013 by three small business owners, including myself, and what started as a passion project has now become a nonprofit organization dedicated to strengthening Cape Cod's local economy by promoting the importance of supporting small businesses and fostering a thriving community. Through education, advocacy, and direct support, we strive to inspire residents and visitors alike to invest in our unique local businesses and contribute to the sustainable growth of our region. We know that our local businesses are a huge part of giving Cape Cod its distinct sense of place, and we also know that market trends and public policy choices over the past five decades have harmed small businesses. This has negatively impacted main streets across the country, leaving communities without a sense of place and entrepreneurs without the confidence and capital they need to bring their ideas to life. And as a result, the number of small businesses started in the United States has been on a steady decline since the nineteen-seventies. So we've gone through the exercise of imagining what this place would look like without our local businesses, and I think we all sort of went there during COVID. And that picture does not represent a place we want to live, and we're pretty sure it's not a place people want to visit, which is a huge consideration for a place like Cape Cod that relies so much on tourism. Most travelers want to go somewhere that feels unique and authentic. We are lucky that here on Cape Cod, we do have a strong local business culture, but we are not immune to what goes on over the bridge. So we work to ensure that the impacts of things like corporate concentration and the massive shift to shopping online with large e-commerce giants doesn't impact our local businesses to a point of no return. Our goal is to show people why it's important to choose local and how to do it. We do this in a few ways. We connect consumers to local businesses through our Love Local Fests, two annual publications, and our retail store in downtown Hyannis. We support small businesses across the Cape through workshops and grant programs. We produce research and digital content qualifying and quantifying how much our local businesses mean to our local economy. And we share all of this information with the consumer public and our policymakers, because you all have an impact on how well our businesses fare on Cape Cod. When we first started Love Live Local, we highlighted research from communities across the country that showed just how important local businesses are to local communities. Like, small businesses provide a tremendous amount of tax revenue. A study done in Asheville, North Carolina, showed that a typical mixed-use acre of downtown Asheville yields one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars more in annual tax revenue to the local government than an acre of strip malls or big-box stores. They provide jobs. According to the US SBA, small businesses have created two out of three net new jobs since 2014. They support local nonprofits financially and with their time. They keep communities unique, and they keep money in the community. And for this point, we have been able to collect our own data.
Cheer.
You have right in front of you. So since April of 2020, Love Live Local has produced our own annual studies to quantify and assess the impact of Cape Cod's locally-owned businesses on our local economy as compared to national chains and online corporations. We felt it was important to put a dollar amount on just how much local businesses reinvest in the Cape Cod community, to show people it's not just about supporting friends and neighbors, which is a great reason to support local businesses, but it also makes financial and economic sense for all of us. Purchases from national corporations typically cause money to leave the local economy, as national chains and online purchases send money outside of the community to the areas where they're headquartered. When dollars are spent locally, they can in turn be respent locally, raising the overall level of economic activity. These analyses have quantified what we already knew. Local businesses of all kinds, retailers, restaurants, and personal and business service providers like fitness centers and accountants, keep up to four times as much money in the local economy as their national chain competitors. This is due to profits paid out to local owners, wages paid to local workers, procurement of local goods and services, and support to local nonprofits, the impact of which cannot be underestimated. It also showed that both local retailers and restaurants need less space and sprawl to generate more revenue per square foot than their chain competitors. And locally-owned retail restaurants and hotels employ more people per square foot. Put into real dollars in the retail market, a market shift of just ten percent from corporate stores to independent stores on Cape Cod would retain an additional one-hundred-and-twelve million dollars in the local economy every year. Unfortunately, since the nineteen-nineties, large chains like Walmart, Lowe's, Home Depot, and Target have been peddling to municipal officials and town residents that they are necessary and good for continued economic development, economic development and growth. And for many years, people have bought what they're selling. But we have done a bit of myth-busting, and as it turns out, their sales pitch doesn't always represent reality. When there's news of a box store coming to town, one of the most common endorsements for the project is that it'll bring more jobs to the area. But in reality, big-box stores cause job loss. A study by independent economists examined over three thousand counties across the US and tracked the arrival of Walmart stores between 1977 and 2002, and it found that big-box stores eliminate more retail jobs than they create. The study found that opening a Walmart store led to a net loss of one-hundred-and-fifty retail jobs on average. This is because regardless of where a new box store chooses to locate, it doesn't increase the amount of disposable income in the community. So any money spent in the new box store is likely money that would have been spent in a local business, causing overall revenue to drop for that business, which can lead to downsizing or closure. Another popular perception that turns out to be a myth is that third-party selling platforms like Amazon and third-party delivery apps like DoorDash are good for a small business. They are very happy to have you believe that they help small businesses expand their reach and connect with customers. In fact, Amazon likes to say that fifty-eight percent of the sales on their e-commerce platform are made by third-party sellers, many of them small businesses looking to tap into the two-thirds of American shoppers who start their online shopping search on amazon.com. And on the surface, third-party delivery apps seem like a great service for independent restaurants that can't afford to offer delivery of their products to customers themselves. But if you scratch beneath that surface, you'll find that on any given sale on Amazon, third-party sellers are charged twenty-five to fifty percent of the list price. And the dominant third-party delivery app services charge upwards of thirty percent of every order, amounts that have increased every year. And in businesses where the net margin is at most ten percent, this is in no way profitable. These platforms also use data collected from consumers to identify lucrative and successful products and restaurant concepts that they will then create a version of under their own brand names, cutting the independents out altogether. So the reality is that corporate third-party platforms are simply trying to extract as much wealth from local communities as they can to enrich their shareholders. But unfortunately, small businesses feel like they have to stay on the platforms, because they don't have, they feel like they don't have any other choice. The last myth I'll address today is that big businesses and their economies of scale make promises to be cheaper, easier, more convenient, and more efficient. These promises have led to virtually unbridled corporate concentration in most sectors of the economy, to the point where despite the illusion of too many choices, when you go to buy just about everything, nearly every marketplace is dominated by just a few large players. But these assertions that a gur is better don't always pan out. COVID-19 revealed the fragility of our consolidated supply chains and how vulnerable we are to shortages. For example, meat processing is so consolidated that COVID-induced disruptions at a few giant slaughterhouses led to meat shortages in supermarkets across the country. Studies actually show that corporate concentration makes it almost impossible for new companies to enter and compete in many markets and leads to stagnant wage growth. And once a market is concentrated enough, companies can and will manipulate prices, reduce supply, and deliver terrible customer service. Just look at Comcast on Cape Cod. Studies estimate that corporate concentration like this can cost the average household between five thousand and fifty thousand dollars per year in lost purchasing power. And a 2,000 paper in the Harvard Law Review found that median compensation for workers would be more than ten thousand dollars higher if employers were less concentrated. The moral of the story is that locally-owned businesses, no matter the industry, consistently exceed their chain and online competitors in spite of what the corporations would have you believe. The impact of corporate concentration and power has other implications as well. Without a path to success, our small businesses will continue to falter, which is on a very deep level and equity issue, since small business ownership is one of the best ways to create generational wealth. Our colleagues at Amplify POC are working to reduce the racial wealth gap on Cape Cod by increasing local ownership of all kinds. This is important work for our communities and our local economies, because according to a study done by Wallet Hub, Massachusetts is a state with the sixth biggest racial wealth gap. Put into dollar amounts, a study done by the Federal Reserve of Boston in 2015 determined that the median net worth of black families in the greater Boston area was eight dollars, while their white counterparts had a median net worth of two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars. Amplify likes to say that opportunities that build wealth for people can help to foster inclusion and belonging, building stronger affinity and investment in the Cape Cod economy from all residents. But there are also economic gains. According to the Massachusetts Taxpayers Association, if Massachusetts could close the racial wealth gap, the state could grow its economy by twenty-five billion dollars over five years. Our aim is to provide and rally support for all local businesses, because despite their proven importance to local economies and community vitality, small businesses across the country continue to face challenges to their survival, like supply chain disruptions, increased personnel and material costs, staffing challenges, and here on Cape Cod, the housing crisis. The responsibility of supporting our businesses is not ours and theirs alone. Local, state, and national governments play a huge role in ensuring their growth and subsequent reinvestment in our towns and entire region. There are many policy and programmatic decisions that are made every day that can support our small businesses on their path to success. Here are a few we advocate for. Reduce the cost of doing business whenever possible and come from a place of yes rather than no. And that's a common one we hear. Second to the housing shortages on Cape Cod, our local businesses say that navigating town government and working with the towns is their second biggest challenge. So we also advocate for providing access to resources and support through grants and technical assistance, increasing procurement of local goods and services whenever possible. Municipalities have huge buying power, and it benefits the community to keep as much of that expenditure as local as possible. Invest in and support additional local broadband capabilities. End all special treatment of national corporations, if it still exists. Support zoning ordinances and encourage the proliferation of locally-owned businesses. Encourage and support local operation of personal and business services, for example, like waste hauling. Limit corporate power and concentration through things like antitrust actions and right-to-repair laws. Support main streets and downtowns with funding and things like data collection and event support, since this is where many of our mom-and-pop shops call home, and advocate for equitable access to business ownership. These measures and actions are so important for a place like Cape Cod, where ninety-nine percent of businesses have fifty or fewer employees, and keeping our small businesses strong and vibrant is directly tied to our community's well-being. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. And before I take questions, I'm just going to ask the gentleman in the back row. Are you taping?
I was recording it, am I supposed to?
Okay, so you're just supposed to notify me if you're doing that? I read that at the beginning, so. Thank you. So on to board member questions. Jeff?
No, Amanda, thank you for being here. I don't have any questions. I think this is special for me, because I watched you do this back in 2013 and work your way to where you are today. And it's no surprise, since your mother and father are part of the Hyannis Chamber, and they've been so involved in community and everything on that end of the Cape. You know, for me, it's about foregoing the convenience and simply purchasing local.
And we like to say, you know, check your assumptions at the bridge, because, you know, sometimes it's actually not that convenient to shop online. And we actually heard, and I should also qualify that you can shop local online, too. So we heard from a lot of local businesses that their online sales were up over the holidays, and it was a lot of locals purchasing, but then also the second homeowners who had developed a relationship with those businesses, purchasing from over the bridge, too. So, but, you know, there are some, there is a convenience factor, for sure.
Perceived or otherwise?
Perceived or otherwise. And perception?
Is reality.
Is reality. So, you know, we just like to say that, reminding people that their purchases have such a dramatic impact, and then being really thoughtful about where you make those purchases is really important.
Well, I'd say thank you for being here and hope to see you again in a year for more data.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a great presentation. Don?
I'll defer to Michael if you want to go here first.
I'll go to Michael. You have nothing?
I do have something.
Thank you, Amanda, I really appreciate the presentation. I was part of the group that testified several times against the Lowe's at the Cape Cod Commission. And it would have just torched nurseries, hardware stores, electrical supply stores. More than that, they all, big-box stores, all have a history of ghost stores, where eventually they don't meet performance criteria. So after they've wiped out pretty much all those small businesses in their locale, they close, leaving this hulk that's empty in them.
I had a really nice visual of the Kmart.
I'm sure you do. I mean, I've asked one of the corporate heads of Lowe's, because he was claiming there were all sorts of thirty thousand, forty thousand, fifty thousand dollar jobs six years ago. Few workers are full-time, first of all. Most of them are filling in as a part-time thought. And as you mentioned, much of the profits are swept into corporate headquarters away from here, and they don't recirculate on the Cape the way they would have fifty, a hundred years ago. So it's almost parasitic. So as far as I'm concerned, I agreed with Jeff. Jeff was a big fan of the presentation in the first place. We have to find ways to support the small businesses here.
Well, and I would say that we can't get complacent either, because there is talk of Lowe's wanting to come to the Cape again. So, and even if they, I think it's, sometimes it's easier for, if we're not in the Hyannis area, to be like, oh, well, if it's there, it's okay. But it actually, it would have a huge impact on, wherever it's located on Cape Cod would have a huge impact on all of the hardware stores and the garden centers and places like that that you mentioned.
I got it, and you got me.
Yep.
Michael, do you have any comments?
No, Amanda, great, great presentation, and thank you. I understand exactly what you're doing and saying. My whole life has been around small business, so I appreciate your work.
Thank you very much.
I think that you also really highlight the fact that, you know, a lot of what people love about the Cape is it's unique and it's different, and it has different things to offer, whether it be landscape or purchases, whatever. I think it's so important for us to all support our local businesses. And I think it's a testament to the fact of variety in small restaurant owners that show you that those are the popular ones here on the Cape, not chains.
Right. And I, it is kind of, that is a beautiful thing, that on the Cape, I don't think chain restaurants really, ever really took off. And that's why I kind of highlight things like third-party delivery apps, because there are those other corporate overlords that are trying to work their way into the local community and extract, like you said, have a parasitic, and extract as much wealth. And I think it's just, we encourage people to just buy directly from the business whenever, you know, you possibly can.
And just like returns, no one likes to return, but returning online's not easy either. So, you know, returning to a local business where you can create a relationship is so important, so.
Yeah.
Your presentation's amazing, you have so much information.
Thank you. And, you know, we like to come here, because it is, you know, municipal government does have an impact on our local businesses. And I think however you all can, to support them and prop them up, you have incredible businesses in Harwich and Harwichport, and I think supporting them as much as you possibly can is really important.
And you do your event in Hyannis normally. Do you do anything further, like, no?
Not yet.
Okay. We'd love to have. That's great.
Yeah, we, I've said, we're open to exploring that, for sure. And it just would have to be the right, the right fit, for sure.
Well, thank you for your presentation and all the information.
Thank you.
And I hope that the public is listening acutely to how important our small businesses are.
Me, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
New business. Prove the employment agreement between Joseph F. Powers, Town Administrator, and the town of Harwich.
Second. Was that a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Moved and seconded for discussion. Michael?
Yep, I would actually like to add a little amendment to this if, and I think it would be cleaner if the second and the motion were removed, and then a motion encompassed this change. We missed something.
Okay.
My second is removed.
And I've removed my motion. Go ahead, Michael.
Thank you. So with all the work that we've done on this, and with the contract extension being offered tonight, we have taken care of February 12th through June 30th, and then July 1st on. But one thing that was missed was February 1st, 23, to June 30th, 23. In that period of time, the town administrator will have not gotten his two percent COLA. In that period of time, the Town Administrator will have not gotten his 2% COLA. And I would like to add the 2% COLA for those five months to this agreement. It was by no fault of the Town Administrator, and it was a mistake made by the board at that time. And every other employee in town got their 2% COLA. This would be the only person that did not, and I don't see that as fair in any way.
Great. So I guess we can take that information and pass it along to board members. Do you have any comments on that? Jeff?
I support that fully.
Okay. Don?
Barely, yeah.
Okay. And I do as well. So if we can make a motion, then I'll have you make a motion and I'll, you know.
Maybe Michael could make that motion.
Or Michael, yeah, go ahead.
Since he's got the dates right in front of him.
Yeah, I have them, but that's okay. Michael, do you want to make the motion, or I have the dates if you'd prefer?
I stand by.
Okay. So.
I move that we approve the employment agreement between Joseph F. Powers, Town Administrator, and the Town of Harwich with the addition of 2% COLA added for February 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2023, at 2%.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion by board members?
Yep.
Don?
I've made no secret as to my concern over the state of the town, particularly staff morale. As such, I think it's time for change, and I will not be voting for this contract extension.
Jeff, you've already said you support it, so I guess I'll just call for a roll call vote. Michael?
I'm an aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Don?
No.
And a no. So three to one. And then the presentation and discussion on fiscal year 2025, operating budgets. And Joe, vote of you on that?
I hate to ask, was that just on the amendment or on the full contract?
That's, oh, should, do you want us to break it down? It's the full contract. It was amending the contract to include those additional dates. So covers the whole period of 212 to 630, 24, 71 to 630, 24, sorry, 25. And then the period of 2123 to 630, 23, the 2% COLA to add to the agreement. And then we'll go on to the discussion on the fiscal year 2025, Department Operating Budget.
So, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. What do you have in your packet? First should be a cover memo from me just explaining that you have an updated, what is called Sources and Uses document that covers revenue and expenses. This should look familiar, was included in the budget presentation that I did at your last meeting. There are some, there's at least one updated number week over week, and there's an additional update that I received from the Finance Director that I can share with you in a moment. And then beyond that, you have, as referenced before, the line-by-line salary, wages, and expenses for all of the departments that make up the operating budget for the town, and what you would see would substantially be what we're used to as Appendix B in the Town Meeting Warrant, tying back to Article IV. So if I could draw your attention to the sources and uses, a change from the original version I had given you folks a week ago. If you look under the expenses line, under Article IV items, the second line talking about group health insurance, you may recall that last week, that was a projected 10% change. On Wednesday, the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group did vote to support an 8% increase year over year. I would put the caveat out that this is not a number based on the actuals, but rather taking last year's and increasing by 8%. So the number itself may change slightly as far as what you see there, but it is meant to reflect the fact that it's an 8% year-over-year increase and not the 10%. Certainly not seven or less than we would have liked, but certainly take what is provided in that vote. And then additionally, what I'm handing out to you, enough copies for the board? Thank you. And I apologize to Select Board Member McCaskill. So I can read these numbers, and if Select Board Member McCaskill needs me to repeat, I can certainly do that. These numbers that you now have in front of you tie to the Barnstable County Retirement Assessment. So when you're looking at the Sources and Uses document, the number for fiscal year 2024 was $3,474,024. The number that we were anticipating for the County Retirement Assessment had gone up from my previous report. I believe that was a 5%. What we were presented with, and is this confirmed by Parac and everybody?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't expect this number to change, correct? Thank you. So we had received information from Barnstable County Retirement Association, and if you're looking at the handouts that you now have that will add to the packet, you can see that the total appropriation that the county is assessing or is expected to assess to Harwich is $3,876,886, if I'm reading that correctly. And where the town is expecting to make a payment, as we typically do on the first day of the fiscal year, that reduces our number, so the number that we can apply there So again, $3,812,752. What that shows on that line is a 10% increase year-over-year, and what that does to your bottom-line number of the total estimated expenses is, brings that number to 5.23% So that's my presentation for right now. I can certainly walk you through the sources and uses with the assistance of the Finance Director, if I can phone a friend. And then additionally, we can perhaps answer some questions you may have on the draft operating budget that was in your packet.
Thank you, Joe. Questions from board members. Michael?
Yeah, I would just ask if the Town Administrator can have those documents scanned and then email them to me?
Will do.
Thank you. And then Julie, Madam Chair, as far as questions go, I've got quite a few, but are we gonna, you want them now, or do you want them after we go through the rest of the Sources and Uses page?
Yeah, well, you can hold them if you have several. Do you want to go, let me go to other board members first, and then we'll go to the Sources and Uses. Jeff, do you have any?
Yeah, my questions aren't, my questions are related to that and the municipal or the department line-by-line. I didn't know if the questions were now directed just at what Joe updated us on.
For now, I'd say it's just for the update, and then we'll go to the next portion.
Okay, no questions on that.
All right. Jeff, do you have any?
I have no questions on that.
Don?
I'm with Michael.
So, okay, so we'll go on to the next portion. Michael, you want to go ahead with, do you want to go through, Joe, any specifics in addition to what he wants to talk about? Michael?
You mean with the documents under this topic? I've covered what I have. I can certainly respond.
Yeah. Go ahead, Michael, with your questions.
Okay, so I'm going to pull this form back up so I can follow along. And I would start with, I'm not sure if I'm directing these at Kathleen or if I'm directing these at Town Administrator, but I guess whoever answers it. So the first is on the revenues and on the levy, and the question is, what percentage of the levy are we using? And what did we use last year?
So I can start and try it. Are you making reference to fiscal year '24 column or just in general?
I am, yeah, '24 in general, well, in general, so '24 and then the proposed.
So I believe what you look for and what you're looking at in Sources and Uses, the FY levy limit, what it breaks out is the levy limit, then you factor in 2.5% in estimated new growth, then there's also the assessment that is outside of 2.5 from the county and any debt that was exempt. That gives you the $58,325,230 figure. It's my understanding that that represents the maximum levy limit that was available to the town. And if I understood the question correctly, then it would be what amount below that is the town relying upon? Did I capture that?
Correct. Yes.
The actual, yep. Yep.
You have to come up to the podium so the public can hear you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Kathleen Barrett, Finance Director. Hello, Michael, from and beyond.
Hello.
I certainly am not going to ballpark numbers. It's certainly not the appropriate response. It's a very valid question. We did not, the levy was below the levy limit. It was, it's not a sizable decrease, but it is lower. I can get, Michael, that exact figure as that was, it was set when we did the tax rate recap. So I can actually stand by for whatever questions, if that's.
Yeah, that would be good. Do you mind?
Be happy to.
So, Michael, you heard, did you hear Kathleen? She will get you that information. And obviously, we all want that information.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Any other, do you want to follow?
So the two and a half increase, not the two and a half increase, the estimated net growth, we have $504,719 for fiscal year '24, and we're showing less for fiscal year '25. How are we trending on the net growth for '24?
So the estimated growth in '24, that's the actual growth that was certified by DOR. The $500,000 is just an estimate, which is very close. It's not, I, you know, talked with Carly about it insofar as is that a reasonable figure? We always want to be conservative in our amounts. We never want to overestimate our revenues that are expected. So with it being very, very close, we thought it was a reasonable figure.
Okay.
We don't find that out until probably well in the winter when we're actually ready to do the recap. And they get it certified. Takes a while.
And then county assessment outside of 2.5, $264,793, two years in a row. What is that?
That is an actual, the $264,793 is the actual that we paid. We have not gotten an estimate from county. So usually the change is not too large, and we thought it was safe to just leave it as a zero increase. They may increase their assessment a little bit, but it's usually not material.
Thank you. Exempt debt, can you explain to me why that's so different?
Certainly. So exempt debt is all the debt from, that was voted at various town meetings that is outside the Prop 2.5. So those are all the votes that we voted outside of town meeting. Almost all of our debt, I think, and Michael, I had sent you the debt schedule. So what it is, is usually because of the way everything, it's just the process of municipal debt, is the, it's usually kind of front-loaded, and it's a decreasing amortization schedule. So the change from $5.617 million to $5.139 million is a decrease in the actual debt payments that we are scheduled to make currently.
Excellent. Julie, I got lots more questions, so you tell me when you want me to stop, but if I can finish at least this section.
Yeah, go ahead and finish this section, and then I'll go to other board members.
Thank you, Julie. On the revenue side, last year, we had a line item called overlay surplus, and that does not seem to be there under the revenue. Where did that go?
We did not include overlay surplus in the revenue projections for FY '25 because of the higher receivable balances that we had. We actually.
Say that again, because of the what?
The higher outstanding receivable balances for property, both real estate and personal property taxes, were much higher than in years past. So the overlay is, the allowance for overlay is like a fund, and it's, the way the DOR calculates it is, you're supposed to have, if for some reason everyone stopped paying on June 30th, would you be able to cover the outstanding balance? It's never the case. It's not a realistic thing, but it is a requirement. So you have to have enough in this allowance account to be reasonable and be, you know, safeguard against, you know, something calamitous. So because of that increased receivable, we had to increase the overlay balance. There really wasn't a surplus that we really could pull from. It may be something as the balances, you know, decrease. We did have some, you know, receivable issues in June of '23, which have since been resolved. But that did cause a required increase in what we had to allocate the overlay.
Thank you. Great explanation. Can I get that, can the board get that in a memo? And I'd like to understand, I'd like to know what the overlay surplus balance is and what the difference is this year versus last year on the receivables, so that that makes sense to me.
Certainly. If you actually, just to kind of clarify that point, if you go below in the expenses, the first three line items, it has recap state assessments overlay. In '24, the overlay contribution was $560,466.45. So for FY '25, it's $325,000. So there's a corresponding decrease in what we will need to contribute. It's an actual, almost fill number when we do the tax rate recap, but that's what's make everything work. Values versus the levy, and you calculate the rate per thousand, that kind of, as soon as you get that to work, it kind of tweaks the number a little bit. So that's why it's an odd number. You wouldn't normally think so, but that's what kind of makes the whole process work because you're dealing with such big numbers. But I can certainly explain, and to be clear, just, it seems like nitpicking, but there's two accounts. There's an overlay, which is an allowance for abatements, and, I can't think of it now. So that's what we technically call overlay. That is an account, so someone comes in and gets a reef, you know, an abatement for veterans or, you know, other types of categories. That decrease in their tax bill is offset by that account. So every time anyone gets an abatement, it's charged to that account. That's what covers it. So the town is really, in essence, funding those abatements. So, and there's also something, another account called overlay surplus. Overlay surplus is different from overlay. If you deem, if the Board of Assessors deem that we have surplus in the overlay account, they vote to transfer the money to overlay surplus. Those funds then can be appropriated, or they can be actual left to the end of the year and contribute to free cash. So just don't want people to misunderstand. It's more accounting process, but it is particular and specific. So currently, we do not have funds in the overlay surplus account. We have a very substantial and appropriate amount in the overlay account.
Okay.
Okay, so then if we have none in the overlay surplus, then if you could do that memo based on the overlay account and what the overage in receivables, that would be great.
Okay. Mike, would you like that as of FY '23, or would you like it current?
I'd like it current because I'm really, really trying to nail down on this year's budget, but I would like to know, or this budget, I'd really like to, so FY '24 and FY '25.
Very good.
FY '24, sorry.
Very good.
Okay.
I do know, Kathleen, it was three years ago, and I was the Board of Assessors, and I had a conversation, and it was related to owners unknown land of low value, and the suggestion was made that we could write the article for money to come out of overlay surplus. So I just want to understand what those balances are and what the difference is this year versus, and I think you nailed it, FY '23 and FY '24.
Sure.
Thank you. Julie, I'm almost done. It's just a couple more lines here.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then local receipts, I'm good on. Inner fund trans. Inter-fund transfers, and that's a 47% difference. Can you explain inter-fund transfers to me?
I can give you some details, and Joe can probably provide the additional. So, inter-fund transfers are transfers from various funds, whether they be special revenue. We have transfers that come in from the, it is the PEG fund, which is from cable receipts. It is from betterment funds. It is from, we had prior years transfers from the CPA fund, which covered the CPA debt. So, there are any funds that we really do an entry to transfer them into the general fund, and maybe become part of the funds available for the whole omnibus budget. These specific things for this year, while not included, I think Joe may have the actual details. I don't want to ballpark the numbers. I'm pretty sure I know them all, but never want to guess.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just the larger ones making up that, that significant difference would be great.
I'll defer to Joe. I think he's looking for it.
He's, yeah, Joe's looking to give more information.
And if, if, in the meantime, I can ask my very last one, which is indirect transfers, water. That went up 8.2%, about 70,000. What, what is the difference there, Kathleen?
I'm sorry, I had to move my microphone. Could you please repeat the question?
So, indirect transfers related to water, $70,000 difference.
That is for the increase in their, let me see, is that, I think that's the operating budget. Is that correct?
I'm looking for the other answer. I missed that question completely.
The indirect transfers for water? Oh, I'm sorry, that is the, excuse me, that is the revenue in. So, what we do is we cover, we calculate. I calculated the amounts of costs that we can charge to the water enterprise fund. Enterprise funds are self-contained funds, so their revenue and expenditures and fund balance stay together. Whereas you, like, departmental receipts become part of the overall general fund budget. So, it's, but there are costs associated with it. Like, we do, the Treasurer's Office processes all the water department receipts. All the wastewater is in addition. But we also do all the water payroll. We do, like, there's, there's a lot of costs. And so, there are charges that we assess, and this is part of the IGR for enterprise funds, that we, you can charge the enterprise fund for those costs, which are very specific, and they're not, you know, estimate. You know, they're estimates in a sense, but they are actual costs. The treasurer's.
Okay, so indirect costs.
That's indirect costs, yes.
Thank you. Julia, I'll stop there and wait for Joe's answer on the other.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Do you have an answer?
I do. First, the indirect, excuse me, inter-fund transfers. And then I do have some figures on the max levy limit versus the tax recap process. So, with regard to the other funds, and I think the Finance Director made reference to it, we have the, what we refer to as the PEG access, PEG access funds. Short, short term on that is cable. We use betterments. There's funds available from waterway or harbor dredging. The number I was relying upon was one of those accounts. And then there is a golf reserve receipts account for debt. So, the betterments, the dredging, excuse me, the betterments and the revolving, the betterments and the golf reserve receipts is meant to help with debt service payment. So, what was added year over year is what I mentioned last week in my budget presentation, the special purpose stabilization fund on wastewater. So, that dollar amount is 500,000. I think the difference in some of the numbers, if you look at the inter-fund transfers number in my spreadsheet, the sources and uses, that number actually should be 1,11664. And the difference between those numbers is we had a lower number covering for the Harwich Channel funds in the operating budget. So, again, the correct number that I have, or the number I believe is correct, for fiscal year '25 for inter-fund transfers is 1,11664. And that is the funds that I've just mentioned, again, PEG access, betterments, waterway for dredging, golf reserve receipts, and the special purpose stabilization.
And just for clarification on that, you just said that that number jumps slightly because of the cable. Is that right?
Right, I think the delta between what the Finance Director was working on and what I have is an up-to-date number on the Harwich Channel operating budget, I believe. And then, I had some numbers, and I just want to validate them through the Finance Director on the maximum levy limit. So, again, the 5 million figure that you see in the sources and uses, as we've articulated, that's the maximum levy limit that's allowed. And if you match that against the tax rate recap numbers, both of which the town has already reported to the Division of Local Services, that other number is 57,355,379. So, I can read that one again, 57,355,379. And my quick math shows that we're using about 98.2% of the allowable limit, or just under a $970,000 difference, if I'm reading from the right sources.
That sounds like the right number.
Thank you. And, and Joe, I would really appreciate the, the detail on the inter-fund transfers as part of what gets scanned and sent to me.
Sure.
And, and then on the levy limit, I guess my question would be the, the maximum. If we're using 98.2% of the maximum on a year like this, where it seems like things are going way up, why wouldn't we borrow 100%? Or use 100%?
Well, I think in one instance, what you're looking for fiscal year '24 was the max. I guess the question would be, are we showing the max theoretically, Kathleen, for fiscal year '25?
Well, this is, this is the levy limit that we can charge. When we actually settle everything, when we do the recap, the estimated local receipts will have a big impact on that. Those are, you know, funds from outside that, you know, from the departments. So, that helps to lower what's actually charged as the levy, you know, which assessed to everyone's tax bills. So, you know, if we are able to have higher, you know, local receipts, that's a benefit to taxpayers, because it's a, it's a slightly lower amount that has to be assessed, you know, via all the tax bills. So, it wasn't.
Thank you.
You know, we're not, it's hard to, till you actually do the recap and get all the numbers, it is hard to, you know, exactly get to the percentage.
So, you're, just, again, a follow-up question for me on that is to say, when you're looking at that number, you're trying to stay below the two and a half anyway, because you're trying to get those estimates in, and you can't solidify that information.
Like, so the levy limit is the very most that you can charge.
Right.
So, you, you know, the other revenue numbers, general government aid isn't going to change. The only thing that we really have, you know, any ability to really impact is the local receipts and inter-fund transfers.
Okay.
So, you know, you try to bump those up, if, you know, hopefully, we get a lot of that.
Get more. Does that answer your question, Michael?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Any, any other follow-ups, or are you good?
I'm going to stop there, as I said I would.
Okay, thanks.
I'm good through that section.
Okay. Jeff?
I'd like Don to go, if that would be all right.
Go ahead, Don.
What if I said you should go? Thank you, Madam Chair. Kathleen, you're going to have to forgive me here, because you, you mentioned earlier about the overlay surplus account. The inter-relationship between that and at the end of the year, free cash. I was not at a couple of meetings, so you forgive me if I'm asking something you're going to answer. But where do we stand with free cash right now?
That's been submitted, but I do not have an estimate. I anticipate it by the end of the week. We should get the actuals by the end of the week. It's a relatively slow time. It's been submitted, and I'm still waiting to hear back.
You have an idea of one, because we're getting up against it.
I'm, I'm not going to provide an estimate, just because it's just, I'm sure we'll have an actual before too long. So, to have people go off and running with an estimate and then to change it, it's, you know.
And did you say you expect it by the end of the week?
I, yeah.
Okay.
I don't, they work from home, so I don't think the snow is going to impact them. We're going to go with that.
So, were they nearly there?
Yes, it's been submitted, and I haven't heard back today. There wasn't any questions or concerns. So, I'm going, no news is good news.
Right, I'll go with that.
Yeah.
Don, you have any other questions? No? Jeff?
As soon as I hear, I'll, I'll email everybody. You will. There are some things that comes from DOR. But I, in turn, will also, because everyone's really anxious for that amount, as soon as that's available. Make sure everyone's aware of it.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a tag to that, there's a reason I'm asking that. It's not because I'm interested in what it was as much as I don't want to see free cash at a really high amount as we roll into this next budget, so.
It'll be less than last year.
I get that, yeah, but the discussion is going to wind up being about what's a reasonable number and, you know, what, what we should do about projecting receipts and anything that could wind up affecting free cash going in. I mean, I think you've answered the question about the overlay surplus, but there are other ways of coming by.
I mean, the best thing is if, you know, in a perfect world, is, you know, we base everything based on the current year's taxes. If people pay their back taxes, whether they be, you know, personal property, or they be motor vehicle, or they be real estate, if someone pays off, like, they sell a big property with a big tax title balance, that goes directly to free cash. That is tremendously beneficial to the town. There's really no downside. We didn't do anything wrong. So, like, there's, it's not like there's any kind of, you know, anything behind that. It's, it's really, it's just, it's all good. Those are funds that, you know, the town can use, you know, for, you know, for capital, things like that. But there's not like a, it's not like we're manipulating it. It's, it's like, we have no idea if someone's going to come in and sell a million-dollar property and pay us off for 10 years of taxes. I hope they do. Puts it back on the tax rolls, and it's a benefit to the town. But that's, you know, it's usually, it's, we're, we're so close, and we're so accurate in our budgeting process, both revenue and expenditures. So, when there are funds that become available, you know, app through that process, like, for some reason, we don't spend everything in the expenditure budget, or we get more revenue than we expected, that's definitely a benefit to the town. Free cash is, it's a, it's a terrible name. Really what it means, it's, it's free from encumbrances and obligations. So, taking those middle words out really matter. So, it's unencumbered, available funds is really the best term for it. And, you know, it's not like you can even estimate what someone might do if someone, you know.
Well, similar to during COVID, when there was, you know, monies not spent, right? And then other monies that came in because of different things that happened in, than real estate sales, so.
And if you have, like, an amazing summer where your meal's taxes is, you know, more than you ever could have estimated, you know, that's a tremendous benefit to the town. You know, we are very conservative in our estimates, because you never want to be short and then have to try to make funds up. But if you, if things are better than you expect, there's no downside to that. We can only hope for that.
Uh, Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I would beg to differ with you on is that free cash, in and of itself, is not necessarily a good thing. If it means that you're getting more robust receipts, that's one thing. But if you look at a trend line four, five, six years, and you continually underspend on the direct operating expenses, and they roll over into free cash, then that would indicate that you're not delivering services that could have been paid for during that period of time, rather than just buying stuff at the end of the year. So, and that's a policy decision.
Certainly, yeah. And, and there are, you know, there are considerations to that. Sometimes it's staffing levels. Sometimes we have funds set aside for possible retirements that don't go through. You know, there's usually, like, it's a, it's a built-in good safeguard, so you don't have deficits and you're not concerned. We aren't really, you know, it's not usually good practice to sandbag a bunch of money, you know, so you can, you know, artificially inflate free cash, you know, because as you could see, it's very tight. We're not going to, you know, like, just add a couple million dollars here and there, just, you know, because we want some. So, I mean, every number has really been vetted. And a lot of times, you know, there are funds that are, you know, people don't, you know, partake in the health insurance. We're going to have a, a lower charge. You know, someone leaves, and we don't fill their positions for a considerable amount of time, there's funds there. So, you know, we can go over, I could show you the '23 expenditure budget and show you all the remaining balances. And you can get a sense for what that's from. And you can also, we can kind of give you some context for ones that are sizable. If you have $100 left, it's, you know, it's just to be expected. We do the best we can with budgeting. But anything that's sizable usually is indicative of our particular instance, where something that we expected didn't happen.
Thank you. Any?
I just have two, and thank you for all your work, Kathleen.
Oh, of course.
And Michael answered, asked most of my questions. Don answered, asked, asked one of them. Under the debt, I, I believe it's golf, wastewater. Can you just tell me which one is, is contributing the most to the 27% increase? Or is it pretty equal across?
Debt, oh.
Under expenses, at the bottom there, under OPEB. There are three categories in there.
Yeah, without, without having the full schedule in front of me, I wouldn't want to, but I would say that we had a, a new debt offering that came, I think it was done in '22. You know, obviously, I wasn't here for it. But a large part of that is, is that debt there. What I, I can provide you with a specific breakdown of which categories are that.
That would be, I'd, I'd like to see that if you don't mind.
It really does put some context. You can kind of see how everything works. You know, we had a $16 million borrowing that went on the books in '22, but then the payments don't start till '24. So, sometimes it's such a long time, people forget about it, and then you get this payment. So, yes.
And then lastly, the wastewater subsidy?
Yes.
Just some clarity for me on, on the almost over 50% reduction?
So, the wastewater subsidy, that included debt last year. We're trying to be a little clearer, because there was some confusion with that being lumped into an article. And so, there, there was some, there was some confusion. So, in order to be clear, especially for my purposes and being able to allocate expenses and, and move things in all the different buckets I have to go to, the 467,485 is for their salaries and operating only.
I see.
That is, does not include any debt whatsoever.
So, the delta from the 1,015 is debt included?
Yeah, and that's why we do have, you know, an increase in the debt line above.
That's right.
Yeah, so it was more just a realignment to have things to be actually what they are, because for, for just accounting purposes and to keep things clear, we're just going to pay the wastewater debt out of the general fund, but we're accounting for it. It just, it's, it's a lot of accounting entries, to be honest, to move it around.
No, that makes perfectly good sense.
Yeah, and it's a little clearer, and the reporting is a little cleaner.
Yeah.
So, you can actually say this number is this, and this number is that. That's a.
Well, that's, that's great. If I could just get, as, as you suggested, the, some clarity on the, on the actual debt.
Yeah, so I have a summary, which I think is pretty helpful.
Perfect.
You know, we can certainly, there's, there's, currently, there's 49 debt offerings with the town. So, all 49 of them make up that number. A couple have dropped off, because we've paid them. But there is a great deal of information, and there's every different category and funding source. So, we finally got a pretty good handle on it.
I didn't think it was just three.
Yeah, no.
But that, that would be super helpful.
Yeah, yeah. And it does kind of put it in context, and you can see the trend as well, because it's, it's consolidated numbers. It's a little, you're like, oh, okay, see, so.
Excellent. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And with all these questions, all my questions have been asked, so I don't have any questions. But, Michael, I'll go back to you to see if you had any follow-ups, or if you had other questions on the. or if you had other questions on the operating estimates.
I do, thank you. And just if we could, as we gather this information and distribute things, so I think some of us share the same questions. If we could get all of the answers to all of the board members and have that in a, in a way that the public that's interested in our questions tonight can review it, that would be great. So as, 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 anything that you answer, please copy everybody on.
Okay.
And the Finance Committee will have some of the same questions. So having it available to them will be great as well. Back now, I'm going to go down. I've got some questions based on underneath of that. So the line item by line item. So I'm going to start with the selectmen. And it's, so it's 114 is the line, the line number, I believe. No?
You're not getting a raise.
120. Well, actually, I feel like what was voted in 2023, my share of the 762,000, I didn't get. So I would like to get that into my retirement account. So.
Michael, no one's laughing in the audience, by the way.
You dropped the decimal point in the wrong spot.
And, and just to clarify, because it's a little confusing, and I don't mean to overstep on, I don't want to step on Michael, but that included a wage adjustment account, but it was, it was consolidated in that number. So that's, that was in, in anticipation of all the different union contracts being signed and having funds available because we budgeted based on what we had, because we didn't know what would be signed.
What would be, right, okay. So you're still not getting any money?
I'm not going to prolong this conversation, but Kathleen, I will need a better explanation of that. If it was just stuck there because we took it from someplace else?
No, that was actually, I mean, Joe, you could speak more to that. I wasn't party to it.
A vote of the board to have the funds available to fund all of the collective bargaining increases.
Right, and that's where it goes. It sits there.
Correct.
All right, so I have no shot at getting that money.
You're not getting a dime.
It's long gone. 23 is long gone.
I'm going down to line 136, assessors' expenses, and that jumps up 10.21% from 147, 147,162,000. Can I get an explanation on that?
So I believe that delta is an increase in the third year of the contract with Pacinos, Paul.
Paul Capinos.
Capinos Associates. So that is a contractual increase year over year of just over $15,000. I believe it's also the third and final year of that contract, so we'll be going out on another RFP.
Okay, so it was 140 to 147, 147 to 162. So that doesn't, doesn't add up, but I would take the explanation as part of our memo. If you could just show me the breakdown? Please?
Certainly.
Next line item would be 144, treasurer's expense, and that went up 45.59%, 93,000 to 135,000.
I believe that is, who is that? Joe, do you have the, the web?
On the expense line, it says consultant increase, $49,220.
That's what I thought.
Uh, if, if that was the answer, can I get an explanation on what that means?
That's not a budget that came under my purview.
Certainly. That is going to be the further consultant expenses. We are going to continue with using Eric Kincher's firm. We still have a, a large shortfall in the actual use of the salaries and wages for treasurers. As we all know, there's no treasurer collector. So we are, because of the limitations, we, we build it in just in case, but we're also accounting for the consulting expenses. It's, it's actually, it's actually money well spent and it's less than the salary.
Can I ask a question on this? Michael, can I jump in real quick, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Just, just for me to be clear on this. Let me organize my thought. So in, in the treasurer's salary and wages, I think you just said you, you build in the position that may or may not be filled.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I understand that. But then, instead of using the monies that's not being used but was built in, there's an extra consultant fee to bring an outside consultant in, but we don't use the funds that were allocated for the position first?
We, overall, we will.
I'm saying this wrong, just forgive me, but I.
Yeah, overall, we will, but this is just a safeguard, just in case we hire someone tomorrow. And we may, you know, decrease our consulting expenses as well.
So you're saying, I think, that this shakes out over time?
It does, most definitely.
And I can accept that, thank you.
Uh, Michael, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, we'd just like to have a further conversation on that as we go forward. I think to Jeff's point, that was exactly my point. We're budgeting in $93,000, or the salary prior was $93,000. I, I hope that we're not saying that we're not going to have a treasurer collector by this fall, this next coming budget cycle. So as far as I'm concerned, the 45% increase, unless it, unless it's a conversation and something that's approved by the board as a method to go forward, would be an enhancement of services, and we should be discussing that enhancement of services that we're, as we're going to discuss other enhancement of services. So my hopes are that we have a treasurer collector by then and we don't need a consultant. But if, if, if it is the will of the department head down there, Kathleen, if that's the will of you, we need to have that conversation, not just put it in the budget, because it is an enhancement of services.
Of course, yes. No, it is definitely my goal to have a treasurer collector far sooner than.
Yeah.
The next budget season.
So Joe, if we could just put that in your notes for a future conversation?
Um, I recorded that, thank you.
Thank you. Next one, I just want an explanation. It's line 550, and it's titled human services, two years in a row, same amount of money, $83,250. Can I just get an explanation of what that is?
Uh, Department 560, is that what you said?
550.
Actually, three years in a row at 83,250.
Aren't those grants?
Yes.
Um, sorry, that is Department 560. If you see, I don't know what color that is.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, those are your human service grants that we do every year in the spring.
And that, so that is funded by the town operating budget. Okay, I'm clear on that. Line 610, or no, 629, sorry, recreation and youth expense, $48,000. Then we went to $59,000 and now we're jumping up to $82,000, 30% in, 38% increase. Can I get an explanation on that?
So I would say I, this goes back to the concept of the reconciliation that administration, finance, and the departments are working on. My understanding is that number was inflated between enhancement of services, but actual other budget items that should have been carried over, things that are standard like year-over-year leases and contracts, they were originally removed to get to the 1.5% increase. So long story short, I think I expect that number to come down significantly once we are able to clarify what is year-over-year fixed cost or contractual cost that should be carried over versus enhancement of services.
Okay, thank you. That, that answers that, Joe, but I will look for that detail as well. If it is enhancement of services, I would ask that we put it with the other ones.
Understood.
The last one I had was related to the town clerk, and I just, I'm doing this because it was another, another large jump. But I did call the clerk's office today and get, get my answer. I'm just sharing it so that the public understands it that may be watching. And it's a $45,000 increase to salary and wages. And it is because we are having three elections this year instead of two, and we are having a presidential election. And this is all related to salaries for those which I absolutely support and understand. I don't call those enhancement of services. They are more contractual obligations than anything else. So I will stop there.
Thank you, Michael. I did have one follow-up, and I'm sure it might relate to either dredging or what, but under harbor master expenses, under 633, there's a jump from 324, 470 to 567, 534.
What was the number there, Madam Chair?
Uh, it is 633, yeah.
So Madam Chair, if I could, that is related to an ongoing matter that is being discussed at the county level with managers, administrators, and harbor masters. Harbor masters were notified in late fall, early winter that the county was considering a significant increase in the dredge services because they're dealing with a structural deficit over the years. Obviously, any of us that rely upon that rely upon it greatly, but are also very concerned. That, so I would not constitute that as an enhancement of services. Rather, it's a significant price increase on a program issue. However, you heard earlier on some of the inter-fund transfers, we do have other funds available that we've set aside to try to offset the majority of that. It is still being discussed amongst the county and, and the towns, and we're very hopeful that they might be able to stall that for another year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we certainly appreciate the situation that the county's in, but to hit the towns with it at such a late date is really.
I thought that it related to dredge.
Yeah, and John Rendone, our harbor master, has been a great resource and a force on that. And I think you folks may hear about it through your regional association perhaps before we do, but we'll all just share information. But that's really where the vast majority of that increase comes from.
Thank you.
Julie, if I could add on to that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for that explanation, Joe, and I did read that. We do also have, and I know John's looking ultimately to stabilize his budget so that, because this is an every-year thing. But we do have some leftover money that I hope we contemplate using at least for this year with the large increases that we're facing on the town side as well as on the school side. But I know there's old articles with money left over for dredging, and it would be nice to use those funds this year, and it would be nice to reduce this number if possible, if the county can't do it.
And we, I would certainly agree with that. That goes back to the rebalancing, for lack of a better accounting word. So if there is one, please let me know. But that's where we're analyzing the articles as well, past year's articles.
Thank you. Anything else, Michael?
Sorry, I, I, I'm having a hard time finding the mute button every once in a while, but no, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Jeff, do you have any other follow-ups?
I, I just have a, a question on 699. I believe it's golf intramunicipal agreement with Monmoi Regional School District.
Yes.
Okay, so what is the enhancement of services that has been removed?
So it's not an enhancement of service or, that's been removed. I think what we're looking at is on the first line, there is a reduction in the, I don't want to say a reduction in the support. The school district, and we'll be, they'll be presenting to you at the end of this month at your meeting on the 26th. They are going out to contemplate landscaping services. As I understand it, the town of Chatham informed the district that they may not be able to do the landscaping in-house. And so when they approached me, I said, I think you should approach it the same way, so at least we can discuss that concept. So we're either going to cover the landscaping services through the golf as an IMAs we've done year over year, or the district's going to move forward on a landscaping contract for all of their landscaping needs. So that's what this is getting to, but more on that as we get into the Monmoi Regional School District budget as well.
And just as a, as a, just a question, just, the Monmoi Regional School pay Cranberry Valley to use that golf course?
Sorry, that was a curveball.
Is there a fee? I, I, I understand that Monmoi pays the town of Harwich to use White House Field and Potter's Field. Do they also pay the town of Harwich when they use Cranberry Valley?
I, I don't know for certain. What I do know is that the town of Harwich through Cranberry Valley is a first T promoter and supporter, and I believe that's the cost that goes to that, but I'll reach out to Roman on that one.
That's fine. I probably should have asked him when he was here, but thank you. That's all for me.
Okay. Don, do you have anything else?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Only to say, Kathleen, when we get to the articles, I have questions that might relate to you also.
Of course, yeah.
Thanks.
I don't have any other questions on, on this either, so I guess we can, I want to read the next item.
Find where we are here.
See.
Discussion.
Yeah.
Potential, potential articles.
Yeah, so I move that we have a discussion on potential draft articles for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting to be held Monday, May 6, 2024.
I don't think we need that.
What? We're just going to have a discussion. He's just reading it.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion. That's.
No.
No, he's, he's just, he's just reading from the agenda, so people know that.
We'll have a discussion.
The next item.
Okay.
So.
Second.
Thank you, Michael.
So to, to clarify, are we looking at the, the standard warrant articles and the potential?
So I'll, I'll start the discussion on that if I could.
Very good.
So what you have in your packet were two items related to articles. I believe in the order in your packet, the first one you'll see is relative to the citizen initiative petitions that were received up to the deadline as of last Friday, February 9, by noon time. As you can see in the memo, there are, there are five petitioned articles that have all been certified as having been received and meeting all the requirements, and therefore those will be included in the warrant. And you have all of the original information provided by the petitioners, and certainly we'll be fashioning the articles to conform directly to what the petitioners sought. Secondly, or separately, to continue the discussion going forward, I've provided a second memo that is a list of standard so-called articles and potential other articles. I do want to put out there at the very beginning of this discussion that these are by no means complete, and there's certainly others that have been presented. I know there's a petition article that may intersect within our, our two articles that have been provided by the Housing Committee Chair. In any event, what I wanted to draw your attention to on the potential articles, I think, are some matters of critical policy, if I could say it that way. The first one is for, for there to be a discussion to see if the town is looking, well, would be looking to create a municipal water infrastructure investment fund, lovingly referred to as a WIF. And we know from the material provided by the Commonwealth that the word water can be used interchangeably with wastewater. This is a topic, I think some of you may recall from years past, and it was something that has been vetted and can be brought forward if the board wishes to entertain that. Long story short, beyond what I've put in the memo, it is an additional dedicated funding source, if you want to use that to offset the ongoing costs related to wastewater construction and all of that. Additionally, Madam Chair, you and I talked last week afterwards. Senator Seer had presented last week, so I wanted to make sure that I covered the concept of the article. I believe that may have been also what was provided by the Chair of the Housing Committee, is one of her two articles was a version of what Senator Seer was getting to. So I didn't want those to be lost in the shuffle, so to speak. And then really, as you get into the standard warrant articles, really what you're seeing there, articles one through 31 are what I would consider to be customary articles, such as the election of officers by, by appointment of the moderator, reports of committees and officers, elected official salaries. officers, elected official salaries, and of course, the different budgets. And then we progress into cable-related and capital, and then all of the community preservation articles. So you can see on this list that there are about 40-some-odd articles that we already know will be in the warrant. And then the next page is trying to capture all of the potential articles that I've been made aware of since our last town meeting. It's certainly not completely extensive, as I mentioned. Some of them talk about home rule petitions suggested by Senator Seer. Some of the other ones that are in there are potential appropriation articles. Of course, that will beg the question, where's the funding coming from? And then there would be potential changes to either general or zoning bylaws or changes to the charter.
Thank you, Joe. Do you want to go about this in the sense of any specific questions on any articles or how do you want to go about this discussion? Don, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I had a broad question. Kathleen, that's why I was hoping you'd stay. CPC articles are all contingent upon what's in buckets and what the total is. Do we know for a fact where everything is in CPC right now, including the sub-accounts?
I have a report that I've submitted along with the free cash submission. It's kind of part and parcel to it. So once everything comes back, I will then distribute that to them.
Good.
We had a meeting, we spoke with CPC, what was that, like a month ago or so? They had some estimates based on their information, and so I'm just saying that they have an idea on what numbers they're working with.
I get that.
I mean, I don't anticipate it being more than a few days. I don't think that that's really gonna, you know, kind of take them so far off track they can't move forward.
I just spoke with one of the CPC members today and they were just concerned because they need to know what they're allocating in order for them to actually make their final decisions.
Right, but we did go through those numbers.
The funds in the specific purposes, open space, historic, and affordable housing, are very, very low, so I don't foresee them using those. I would imagine it would all be from undesignated, from balance.
Yeah, but that's the reason I'm asking this because besides the special purpose funds, is there general purpose funds that could be diverted into any individual area that they so decide to augment those areas? So again, they still can't figure out, absent the total review, what it is available to allocate to these things individually.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely, it's not going to slow them down. I mean, they're gonna...
You're going to have those numbers around the same time you get the free cash. So the next five days or so.
Yeah, I mean, they, I want them to be able to get something, and that's the last we have of that conversation. These are your balances, and then the next time we revisit them is the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Michael, do you have any questions on any articles?
Not many at this time. One discussion that we had was, I'm trying to pull it back up, sorry. We did have the discussion, and last year I thought it was excellent that we did the, combined the capital items into, you know, reduced it. We briefly discussed combining CPC articles, which, you know, would save a tremendous amount of time, and I for one am for that, you know, given some of these petition articles and knowing how they go and one side's expert versus the other side's expert. You know, and we really need to figure out placement on petition articles because, you know, having 240 people decide on how we're going to affect a certain group of people's lives, we really need to try and do this when we have a good amount of audience there, you know. We vote the financial stuff, $78 million, in about 25 minutes, and then we spend four hours on petition articles debating science on pesticides or fertilizers. I think it would be great for this board to at least entertain putting the CPC article into one article or two articles or maximum of four, but combining them. I'd like to hear the board's thoughts on that. And then I have a couple others after that.
If I could, I mean, that's a good point. If there was like, I think there was some prior years, don't quote me on the year, but there was like a chart, I mean, if you had like, you know, I don't...
Yeah, like housing, historic.
Yeah, like, you know, X project, you know, $100,000 in the funding source. As long as we can, and like on my side, I say this as self-serving purposes, so long as I can definitively know like how much it's for and then where it's coming from, you know, if that makes it, you know, an easier process, you know, it's just staying really organized is really the biggest thing that I would suggest.
And what do you say, Joe, from your perspective? I mean, I think we have done that in the past.
Well, I always go back to the creation of the warrant is the sole purview of the select board. You're the folks that put it all together. I can qualify that if I need to. Generally speaking, however, the order is something that you can determine. The numbering is certainly something you can determine. For my purposes, as we progress through versions of the warrant, I'm going to hold off on numbering so as I don't, you know, do your job for you, so to speak. However, if we have items that go on for future certification for bond counsel, they always ask for, or they have in past experience asked for, the various versions. So that's why I stopped numbering as many as I did on the standard list so that it wasn't a foregone conclusion. I think you can also rely upon your parliamentary rules to take items out of order, and I think if the board set up a certain order, it still wouldn't prevent a town meeting member from asking to take it out of order. But it is the board's warrant that gets constructed generally.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Except, that was here when they created that, I hate to date myself, but the CPC, Community Preservation Act, is the only empowering mechanism that actually supersedes the select board's purview. I mean, we're not allowed to do anything other than opine on whether we do agree or don't agree on them. As far as I understand, perhaps we can get a legal reading of that before we start combining articles that they're sending over, because we don't have control over that particular section of a warrant, we never have.
Well, I guess the follow-up question I would have on that is, I can't, you know, and I'm not going to speak for CPC, but I don't imagine CPC would mind having them consolidated, and if they do, then they can tell us.
Yeah, I mean...
Why?
I'd still like a legal reading on it.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what they would like to do, that's fine. If they choose not to, I mean, that's certainly their perp.
I think to Michael's point is trying to consolidate when we're trying to get through town meeting and the amount of time it takes. But, I mean, if we need a legal opinion on CPC in terms of putting them in one article or breaking them up, I mean, we can certainly get that.
It wasn't we had that authority, that's what I mean.
Yeah, I mean, in prior years, there was like an under $50,000, and it was like various projects. They were, you know, smaller dollar amounts, you know, kind of less contentious, as it were. So those were kind of consolidated in one article. If they have a dollar threshold, you know, that they want to hold to, I mean, if you went from 10 to 3, I mean, certainly, whatever they feel is best.
Right. Yeah, I don't think anyone here is trying to make a decision for CPC and how they want to proceed.
I think so long as it's clear and concise, yeah.
Sorry?
Yeah?
No, I was going to let's finish.
Oh, sorry.
So to the members' request, I can certainly pursue a legal opinion. Would you also want me to have conversations with the CPC chair?
Yeah, I would just, I would talk to CPC first before you bother, you know, because if they don't have a preference, or they do, let's hear what their preference is. We're not trying to override them.
Madam Chair, with all due respect, whether we even have that ability is my question, and that's why I would like to get an answer from council irrespective of what we do this year about combining them. They have the prerogative of submitting them in any way they want to, I know that. I'm just saying, do we have the authority to combine them or in any manner at all, especially putting them all together? Because I don't think we do under the empowering legislation for the Community Preservation Act.
I guess my only thought was we could be like, we can offer this as an option for you, and that's all.
Yes, I mean, we can follow up with a legal opinion if we need it.
What would be the will of the board on how to proceed?
I'd still like an answer.
So if you want a legal opinion on whether or not, let me just ask you this, just so I can understand where you're going with it. If CPC says, "We don't mind, we would like an article that lists our five things," or if CPC says, "We don't want it that way, we want five articles." So if we take our direction from CPC, you're still saying you want a legal opinion?
I'd just like to know upfront whether we could or couldn't tell them, but I don't, I'm fine with that scenario you present, but this is one of those...
They also have that administrative, you know, account that they could use, and I know that members of the CPC, you know, committee have, you know, they have resources at the state that they confer with.
And that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about who has supremacy in the warrant, and there are two things that I know. Petition articles can't be taken off by us, and CPC articles are the purview of the CPC, not of the select board.
And I think we're not disagreeing with you. I think we're saying that CPC, we can have a conversation rather than spend more money on legal. If we talk to CPC first and get their opinion on how they want to proceed, to me, we're not overstepping them, we're taking their direction. So why don't we go to CPC and ask them how they want to do it? Then we get an answer, and then we don't spend any money. You like that, Kathleen, right?
I do, I do, I do. I mean, I don't know, nothing against the attorneys, we want to keep them happy, but they're probably up their eyeballs at work.
So, sorry, are we directing the town administrator to talk to CPC first?
Yes, yeah. Talk to CPC, Joe, to see how they would like to proceed, and I think you can let us know what their answer is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Where were we? That was your question on CPC. You have any other questions on articles? Okay, so I guess we're... Michael, following up, do you have any other questions on anything, on articles?
No, I just thought you were going to skip me. I was going to shout. So, Joe, you mentioned, and I think just for clarity, I think simultaneously, Joe can do that whole last discussion in short order, and I would hate to see anything bogged down to have to come back before the board. So I would say, talk to CPC, see if they're interested, and then call legal, and then report back to the board. On, Joe, you mentioned at the beginning of the conversation that the Chair of the Housing Committee had proposed two articles?
So I believe an email was sent to the board. I believe Elizabeth is with us, but yes, I was making reference to an email that you were all copied on.
Could someone remind me what that is?
I'm looking...
Sorry, Joe, I don't recall.
We did get it.
I thought Ed McManus submitted it. It's the change to...
So there's a citizen petition article that gets to one of the topics.
It was sent Wednesday by Elizabeth.
I never got that.
Julie, what was the, what was the two articles that the proposal, I know what Ed McManus is, I read the petition article, but what are the two that...
Elizabeth's, our housing, I'm reading this from my phone, so bear with me. Home rule petition, community housing bank, real estate transfer fee, which, to Joe's point earlier, yeah, I...
I believe she, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, I know she's on. I'm just saying that that's, that was one, and that, back to Joe's point on that, similar to what Julie and Seer was talking about. And then special legislation for the AHTF to amend the Orleans, these are examples, to amend the Orleans Affordable Housing Trust Fund by law, chapter 104, to include attainable housing, another conversation we had in the last two weeks. But Elizabeth, that was sent to us, it was...
I mean, Harwich Affordable Housing Trust?
She means Harwich. She's giving examples, and in the body of her email, she's talking about articles other towns have put on their town, their warrants, and so that's what she was trying to propose, that we take these into consideration.
Thank you for that clarification. You know, I think as I read through this list, and Joe, when does the warrant have to be closed by? When do we have to act?
So the warrant needs to be signed, closed, put to bed, your first meeting in April, at the very latest.
Okay. So as I read through this potential warrant articles list and think about what Joe just said, and think about the budget process, I don't know how much more we could actually put into a warrant with this stuff without having public meetings, and given the timeline on budget and this, I think we really should take a little bit of thought in maybe bringing back to a fall town meeting some of this stuff, because we can't have public meetings, public hearings, and put this stuff out there enough to the public between now and April 1, in my opinion. You know, this millionaire's tax, I think is what they refer to it as, we haven't really had that conversation yet. I know it's been had broadly, but as I look at it, we don't have a plan yet in place of what we're going to do with the money. And I think that there's several people in the public that take exception to this, and are we going to have enough time to actually educate them on that? So I would say that we should have a much more in-depth conversation on the potentials and what we have time to actually talk about enough to bring forward. The petition article by Ed McManus and changing that to attainable, that makes sense, but we have discussed, I think it was two years ago, we discussed other changes that needed to be made to the housing trust documents. So is it possible to have that conversation and put a article on town meeting floor so that when we go to the legislature, they're contemplating more than that sentence?
Yeah, well, Michael, I'm going to follow up on that because I think it's a good point. The other thing I think we want to look at, and, you know, Elizabeth gave the example of the Orleans Housing Trust, and I think in Orleans, they also amended their housing trust, and I could be wrong, but I believe they amended their housing trust to increase the AMI to, I think it was 200% or something like that, because that helps get, you know, people more qualified so that it's not the same levels that we've seen with, you know, other affordable housing that people don't always qualify for. So I think if those items, if we can consolidate what we're trying to do to our trust, and we're looking at these other things, because we're also going to have maybe bylaw charter review discussions that we might be, you know, time is time constraint, and plus we might have some zoning bylaw changes, so maybe it is something that we have another discussion about how we address all of those articles. And then next, really, couple of weeks, we need to figure that out, so.
Thank you. I for one, you know, as we look to solving this crisis that we've all had on the housing, I think it's a much broader conversation, but more importantly to me, a plan, and I think what the housing trust came before us with definitely showed a light at the end of the tunnel, but Senator Seer sat in front of us the other day endorsing a project in Harwich that's supposed to come before us without knowing anything. You know, he said he wholeheartedly endorsed it. Well, my opinion is solving a crisis by creating another one is not what this board should be endorsing. We should have a plan. And nobody has told me yet what it's going to cost our school system, what lack of tax money we're going to get, what infrastructure we're going to change. So I for one am not going to endorse anything or put my name on anything that we haven't fully vetted. There's so many unanswered questions, so for me, rushing them to town meeting makes no sense whatsoever. The last one was, Joe, the one that we discussed, and I know we discussed it a little bit tonight, which was reallocation or reappropriation, I guess is the best word, of past article money. Is that one that we might, because that's a real financial impact on the residents. Is that one that we might be ready for, or is that just related to the capital items? And you do have some of those listed in there.
So it wasn't that it was related to the capital items, but rather, excuse me, rather it would be informing the motions. In other words, I was not contemplating an article that does an omnibus rebalancing, but the motions that we build, excuse me, the motions related to the appropriation would tie back to articles.
Previous article.
Correct. If I'm not having a copy, then what I would say is... If I'm not having a copy, then what I would say is, if you have an article that is not already contemplated and it needs a funding source, one of your funding sources could be that the motion and the explanation also talk about taking funds from prior articles and incorporating in the motion the language to reappropriate that. Again, I'm not using necessarily the legal, the right legal terms. But that when you talk about an article that needs appropriation, that's where you capture it. I was not contemplating an article that, the purpose of which was to repurpose the articles.
Right. So you're saying an article that would, if needed funding, could reference a previous article that never moved forward with funding?
Correct, or there were balances left.
To move it from that article to the current article.
Correct.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's, that seems kind of unusually convoluted. In the past, we've taken unused balances. I know Michael knows this. And we've just done a sweep of all unused balances that we designate to be available. I, I think you'd need a matrix chart to be able to say, okay, Article 23 on this town meeting was funded in part by, you know, monies from the fiscal '25 budget. Also from '22, Article 3. It gets really convoluted if you start doing it one by one to try to identify sources. We, well, at least in the past, our practice has been identifying unused amounts in prior town meeting warrants and sweeping them as, as a vote. So that there is a bucket of all of those unused monies.
I don't have any follow up on that.
I don't know how it went.
I, I, I would, I would just say I'm open to a conversation about that. And I, Joe's, I've seen actually it done both ways, Don. And, and I did have seen, Joe, in recent years, you have put articles forward and, and some of the money came from a past article, and it seemed to not be confusing at all, and people bought it. So I, I think just having a, a future conversation and wrapping up more on that kind of to-do list makes a ton of sense to me, however we end up doing it.
Right.
Lastly, Julie, and I will send you the request tonight or tomorrow. We've received $1.5 million from the sale of the lot on Queen Anne Road. And I would like to have the conversation at least about putting another article before town meeting and deciding where we're gonna place that money. But some of that money, or all of that money, I think, because it was the sale of land, should go towards even the, the conversation we had tonight with Kathleen about, you know, collection of money being down. I think we should, we should put that money towards funding owners unknown and getting all of our tax mess cleaned up. And liens and everything else that's on that list, which, you know, over $3 million of that is owners unknown and penalty and interest. So it's gonna take a fair amount to clean that up. So I'd like to see an article putting that money towards the other 500, with the other $500,000 to continue, certainly only my, what I would like. But, and then Julie, the conversation, Madam Chair, the conversation we had the other night with, about real estate and open space, looking at the other lots on Queen Anne, given our success on that one and given the need for industrial or commercial space on Queen Anne Road, you know, maybe one of the three, hopefully three of the three, we can get on town meeting floor this year to get permission from the town to sell those lots. So that's an article that I'm certainly contemplating that would benefit the taxpayers.
A follow up on that, though, I believe we're working, so we've, we voted, I think, last week or the week prior to send them to real estate and open space to look at them further. But we also need a legal opinion based on the way that those parcels were conveyed for open space, correct?
So I did speak with Legal last week. She's confirmed that after Rios does their evaluation on Friday, if it's gonna be repurposed, it would be an article.
Okay.
So it's not on the list because we're waiting to hear the recommendations of Rios.
Thank you, Joe. Okay.
And I know that, I know they've done the site visit. I'm just, I'm, I'm alerting the board that that is certainly something that I'm interested in getting on town meeting floor. You know, given the real estate market and given the success of the last one, I think it makes a ton of sense.
Okay, I've noted that. Are you done? No, I don't mean it.
Yes, thank you. Yep, that's about it. Thank you, well put, Madam. Thank you.
Anyway.
Thanks, thanks, Jeff.
So moving, moving past, I think we can say that we've had a pretty good discussion on our articles that we need to continue to talk about. And so now we will move on to the next item.
I would like to open the discussion on a schedule for the March 2nd, 2024 budget meeting.
By all means.
I was working on that one for the last 20 minutes.
Excellent. So now another discussion on the budget.
More discussion.
On our budget meeting, which we also talked about on that, just saying that we just mentioned this again. It was either last week or the week before about. What?
Yeah, it's gonna be the community center.
Yes, but talking about the fact that we may need a secondary meeting to, because we're, you know, we're looking at the budgets, we're gonna have to, you know, look hard at everything. So I guess, well, I guess my question is, do we want to set a tentative secondary date so that, because, you know, we've known about the March 2nd date well ahead. I know that it's hard because we all have lives and weekends and things fill up. Or do we want to wait and see how the second goes before we make that call? Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I appreciate what you just said. The only problem is if we wait, the, we, the warrant has to be printed.
No, I agree.
And, and there's some statutory requirements for it to be sent out. So I mean, that's, if we wait, it might be a mistake. We should probably set up a tentative date, and if we don't need to use it, torch it.
So that date would have to be following either the following Saturday, which is the 9th? Or we could also do, I mean, it's kind of hard because we don't know how long. We thought it was gonna be something that we could do at, you know, 5 o'clock to 9 o'clock. I'd almost prefer that on an evening versus tying up another weekend. But at the same token, I leave it open to. Do you have a preference?
No.
Are you available on the night?
Sure.
Michael, and you can get back to me, but just, and, and generally, there are secondary meeting just to hold a date, either a weekday or another Saturday. Do you have a preference?
Yeah, my preference would be another four-hour evening slot and not lose another weekend.
Yeah. All right, so maybe we can focus on, on that.
Maybe Wednesday, the 6th?
Yeah, or maybe, yeah, something like that. So, well, I guess we can talk internally about just trying to figure out a date that works. Yeah, go ahead, Don.
Can I ask through, Mr., Madam Chair, Michael, could you see that second one being, you know, plucking out the major organizations so that the Saturday would go faster? Say police, fire, schools? And have that on the night?
Don, I, I think you nailed it, right? So I think at this point, and this late in the game, Jeff probably doesn't know because I'm sure he didn't watch those, but I think, sorry, Jeff. I do think, I had to get you, I had to throw that back at you. But, Don, I agree, because we get bogged down on obviously the larger ones. And, and I think Joe did a, a good job keeping the bulk of the enhancement of services out. So those are gonna be the longer conversations. Because, Don, you, you know, some of the departments, they're, they're in and out, they're small departments. We're, you know, and we're not taking away, a percentage of their budget is detrimental versus us trying to find some money at the larger department level does take more time. So yes, I think separating some things out makes a ton of sense.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, again, we can figure out what, what agenda we're gonna have for the second and then figure out what we think, what kind of time we need. And I, I would prefer a week, a weeknight as well, so, but we can have that conversation about dates. So that's it on that item. You want to go on to the next one?
Yeah, absolutely.
Madam Chair, if I could, just a reminder, Montmore Regional School Committee, or at least the adminis, excuse me, the superintendent and business manager are scheduled to come on Monday, the 26th as well.
Oh, okay.
Just a reminder on that one. Doesn't change anything else, and you can have further meetings for sure.
Right.
I move that we vote to approve and sign the presidential preference primary election warrant to be held March 5th, 2024.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor? Hold on, Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I would like to have a discussion on cell tower revenue.
Excellent. Let's talk about it. Don?
Yeah, just to inform the discussion, because Jeff wasn't here, Madam Chair. The cell tower revenue by vote of the board, when it was presented originally to town meeting was beyond the cost incurred of operating expenses, particularly those massive flags. It was supposed to go in eventually by vote of the board, a select, into affordable housing projects. In, in later years, when the trust was created, we took whatever that remaining balance was and voted because the town meeting article gave us that authority and voted that, the monies that were in that cell tower account beyond operating expenses to be put into the housing trust's account. That's the history of it.
Yeah, there's, we're still.
You gotta go up to the one now.
Sorry.
Because you really should have that money. We didn't do it last year.
Yeah, that's why it's on here.
I had no, I had no idea what this was about. It wasn't in the packet, so I really.
It's really just for us to have that discussion. Because to Don's point, I think the money, we need to vote actually to transfer it to the fund, is your understanding, right?
There was some confusion because I was trying to find the originating documentation or like meeting that actually like created it. Because you can make the assumption, and I'm, it's, and I hate to use that word, and I hate to make assumptions. Usually revenue like that would go into the general fund, and then you would appropriate, you could appropriate that particular amount. So I'm kind of trying not to get too in the weeds, but to actually make sure everything is being done properly.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's been done for a considerable amount of time. So I just wanted to try to kind of find where it started and how it worked so that we're actually doing it correctly.
Yeah.
And I didn't want to like speak to all the amounts we have transferred. Almost all the funds that they were due, that we've received to date, to the housing trust.
Mm-hmm.
So, but there was just some clarification we wanted to make, just to make sure that every, you know, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. And it's not, it's not a reflection on anything that was done in the past to say anything's incorrect.
Right.
It was like just trying to actually find.
That's the true procedure.
So I could read it.
Right.
And be like, oh, okay, because it was.
This is why.
Yeah. It happened so long ago, we're like, no one can remember.
So that's to, to, to your point, for me as well, I'd like to see if it says, do we have to vote to do that? Or do we, can it just be transferred?
Because if it was like, like if it was like receipts reserved for appropriation, you would then like vote those funds, you know, to it.
Into that account.
Yeah. I don't know if that's how the fund was originally, or like over time, had evolved into that. I'm not 100% sure, so, still working.
Don't burst, Don, I'm gonna call on you. Go ahead.
I got it. So, I mean, so we are, we're trying to, you know, follow the spirit of the process, but we're just, for my purposes, you know, and because we are all new in the accounting department, we're really just trying to find all the proper documentation and do everything correct. That was the solution.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's several questions in there. The first one is, I want to say that it was in 2004, annual town meeting. Because I was on that board, and I remember vividly passing it, but the town meeting only authorized us to disperse funds. There was no trust then. Authorized the select board to disperse funds for the purpose of affordable housing. Beyond the, again, recognizing their expenses to it. So you pretty much have to get with Lincoln and find out what the yearly expenses are because those flags are not cheap. And they're our responsibility. But the company was Sprint, and there's been successor contracts. And we have, we, we did both. Initially, there were projects would come in front of us, and the select board would vote to, in part, fund them. Over the last, I don't know, five years, maybe, we have decided that the mechanism that we were gonna use was to vote yearly on the select board level to disperse it to the housing trust and let them make the determination about what the appropriate uses of those funds are for affordable housing. And I was just saying to the Chair a few minutes ago, to my knowledge, we didn't do that last year as a board. So there should be, the, I think that's why, I went through three finance directors with this. I think that's why it was in its own bucket, because it was easily identified without backtracking about what's in that fund and what needs to be moved over. And the last time I recall a vote on that is two years ago.
Yeah, I mean, I really couldn't speak to what happened, you know, prior to my arrival. But we certainly, we are still kind of digging through. We were trying to find the contract and, you know, go to the right town meeting.
No, I'll see if I can find it, then.
Yeah, no, that'd be really helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Julie?
Yep, Michael?
Madam Chair. Could I, could I suggest at least that the board take up and, and consider a vote? And I'm gonna ask Don a question through you first. Does all of the money minus the expenses go into the housing trust now?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, Michael, good question. It was a matter of practice. We're not obligated to do it, but we, we're, we were authorized by town meeting from time to time to disperse from that fund for the purposes of funding affordable housing. So it could be any, all of it, it could be some of it. It, it's totally up to the select board, but the trust doesn't have access to it unless we take a vote.
Excellent. So might I suggest that we have the conversation and that we create a policy that allows the money to transfer year to year into the housing trust without a vote of the board? Because to me, this should be, the, the trust is, is now certainly well on their way to making a difference. And I don't see why we would want to hold this up or have one more action that the board, that board takes. So I would be willing to support, and I would say motion right now, but I don't think we're there because I don't think we have 100% of the facts. I think the board should vote to just make this a finance department, town administrator. Every year, the money goes from, from the cell tower account into the affordable housing trust, and then we would certainly get a point. I think we need to make this process a little less cumbersome.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Totally agree with you, Michael, and that's why I was bringing this up. Because where we're at is, it depended largely on the institutional knowledge of everybody. Jeff wasn't here for any of this. Julie was there for some of it. It would be better, and the finance director is not the same person. We've been through three of them since then. So it would probably be a, a well-needed vote on our part to automatically disperse because we do have to vote. I mean, that was the mechanism town meeting required for the lease. But if everybody in this room were to be different people next year, nobody would remember any of this.
Yeah, and that's why we, I'm, in my office, we're trying to formalize the process. To trace it back to its origination and to actually figure out, based on the type of revenue it is, what's the most appropriate way to, to make sure that it's, you know, the housing trust has it for their, for their operations.
So, Madam Chair, through you, can we make, can we just make this a, can we just make this vote tonight? Or do we need more information to get there?
I, I don't know that we need more information unless it was, I mean, I can't, you know, I'll speak to you, Joe, in the sense that I would think that we could vote on a policy that we want to do this moving forward. But we don't have any other hard facts as to what.
I just don't know.
No, I know, I don't mean that. I just mean.
Could I respectfully request we just defer it for a week? I mean, I certainly don't want to like, you know, make this indefinite, but I also want it to be, you know, properly researched.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we give another week, you look into it further? If you come back with nothing, rather than you waste more time looking, then we will just create a policy and move forward.
Sure, yeah.
Adequate, or?
Certainly, I just remind the board that the board has a policy on making policies. So you may have to.
Violating our policy on policies.
You would be if you bring it back next week. My understanding is, you have an introduction, you have a second reading, and then you have a third.
Okay, so two weeks.
You could vote in action with sufficient notice. That would have been my concern with a vote this evening about the sufficiency of notice.
Okay.
If you want to go the route of the policy, we can tie it to your process. If you want to go the route of a vote of action of the board, separate from policy, we can do that next week.
I think we should probably have a policy, though.
I think a policy, so it's written in that we, you know, so that people aren't tripping over it next time if we were all gone tomorrow, so.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I, I'm completely fine and respect Kathleen's request. I, I'm completely fine and respect Kathleen's request. And then I would, I would further by saying that I move that Chair Julie Kavanaugh create a policy to come before the board on cell tower money.
I second that, Michael.
Then I would say the chair distributes that task to the vice chair. But that's okay. I'll do it.
That would be an amendment to the original motion and you would need a second and I don't see one.
Okay, we'll bring it back and I'll create a policy.
After the meeting, she'll be working on it.
Yeah, exactly. I'll go home and work on it tonight.
We had a motion to second. Do we need to vote on that or no?
I, I trust her.
Okay. We have Link sitting out there. I'd like to move this along for Link. I move that we approve a 2024 Annual Common Vigilance License Renewal Shooting Star Realty DBA Bucha's Tuscan Roadhouse 4 Depot Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, Michael, what? Michael? Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. I thought you were trying to tell me I missed something.
Well, no, you missed the roll call.
What's this move?
I move that we vote to approve the use of Chapter 90 funds for the design and reconstruction of Route 39 and Chatham Road intersection.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Michael?
I have no discussion. I, I think this has been talked about for years. It's well needed. And thank you, Link, for bringing this forward.
Jeff, any discussion?
No discussion. Thank you, Link.
Don? And I have none. Thank you, Link, for moving it forward because we know that hope and go has to be repaired. All in favor? No, we didn't. Oh, here comes Link.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to repeat that when you get to yes, you stop talking. So thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Yes.
Traffic Safety Committee sends you their love.
Thank you, Linda Cibula. I'm saying that for the record. All right, moved and seconded. No further discussion. All in favor? Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Next.
I move that we vote to approve a contract with GHD in the amount of $4,332,000 for construction phase services in relation to Phase 3 wastewater project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Michael?
I'm an aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Next one?
I move that we vote to approve a contract with Hub Technical Services LLC in the amount of $196,231.26 for network upgrades.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Michael?
I'm an aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 2024 Regional Community Development Block Grant, CDBG application.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
As presented.
As presented.
Any discussion? This is the grant we've done in the past. Any discussion? Michael?
I'm an aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Town administrators report.
Nothing other than hopefully the accumulation tomorrow is nothing significant. I do want to echo the sentiments of our Public Works Director. And as they need to treat the roads and all that, please be mindful of staff. They're doing the best they can and the resources we have. And as the son of a former plow driver, you've heard that before, be kind to your local plow driver. Thank you.
Thank you. Don, selectmen report?
Nothing.
Jeff?
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Michael?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing.
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So, all in favor? Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.